This conference will now be recorded.
Right now that we're on the record, today is Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, and I would like to call today's city council meeting to order. Can we begin with the pledge allegiance, please? Can everyone stand?
Allegiance to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic for which it stands, a nation, under God, in freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Absent, excused.
Councilmember Casberg?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Here.
Councilmember Strobin?
Present.
Mayor Protam Cerveny?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Absent, excused. Thank you. Takes us to citizens' public comment. And Clerk, can you please call up public comments from the audience? I'd also like to remind any of those calling in to make public comments to please press star six and to unmute yourselves to speak when we get to you.
So from the audience, we have Jim Irish.
I'm Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, the center of Washington. My comments are for the city engineer and the public works director. And consideration by council. And they are guardrails. The new road, I mean, the road going out of town, Pacific Highway, going towards Woodland, from Hillside Estates to the city limits. The road there is very narrow, narrower, and you only have four inches from the edge, edge of the white line to where it drops off into the ditch. That ditch is anywhere from 12 to 18 inches deep. If you heard of me coming with some of those trucks and et cetera coming through to where you suddenly swerve over, the passenger and probably the driver would have a head trauma injury by the car flipping over and landing on his side. Coming south on Pacific Highway from the beginning of, can't remember his name right now, anyway, the area there down to the, on the right side of the road, maybe the west side of the road, we have the same situation. The situation and the safety of the drivers because that road with all the potential traffic coming in and going out onto the Pacific Highway, when those units get built up, and the school buses, et cetera, you're, have the possibility of having a lot of traffic and a lot of people on there. And some of them, all it takes is one to forget and cause a swerving and the person would be in dire medical problems. But yet, we have had a list in here where the mayor was looking at guardrails and getting funding for guardrails. And we have, as you drive towards Woodland, you will see where they have metal guardrails that sit right on the edge of where the road starts to slope down. And they have the metal post and the metal guardrails. And those are sturdy and they can stop a two and a half truck loaded with gravel, according to their propaganda. Anyway, I would like to have the city engineer and the, and the public works director, excuse me, take a look at that and see if that's something that we could do as a city to protect in the future the amount of traffic that's going to be on that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all from the audience.
Do we have any callers?
Do. If you want to remind them to mute themselves.
Just want to remind any callers that have public comments to please press star six to unmute yourself to speak this evening.
Hello?
Hello?
We hear you.
Yes, my name is, thank you. My name is Kimberly Elbin. I live here in Les Centre on Sixth Street. I am going to start partaking a little bit more here in my local town. I've lived here over 30 years. My mother was born here. However, I've been very active with eight, the last eight months with trying to wake up Clark County residents to the fact that the Vancouver City Council members themselves, so this is our Vancouver City Council members, our 15-year members of the United Nations called the ICLEI. That's called the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. So when our city uses anything that might fall under the environmental initiatives, it is leaking over to all of us because the ICLEI has an agenda. It's called Agenda 21. That's already taken place and now it's 2030. And people need to just look into this, discern for themselves, and figure this out because frankly, everything that we're doing is paying somebody else to say they're getting jobs done, but really, basically the homeless, the, everything that we're doing, the sewer, everything, is actually being spent to weaken America. Now, we're going to have to learn and educate and wake up here. So I'm willing to do that, but I'm asking people to look that up. Also, the mayor of Vancouver is herself a Marxist, frankly. And here's where I want to say to the public to watch on YouTube, Benjamin Bar, or excuse me, Barber, B-A-R-B-E-R. And it's, he names it Why Mayors Should Rule the World. It is very essential to watch that off of YouTube, Benjamin Barber, Why Mayors Should Rule the World. It's, people need to take a look around what is happening, why it's so crazy. This is why. It's depopulation and it's a one-world order. And I would also like to add this. Please stop using dryer bounce sheets, any bounce sheets. It's killing the insects. Take a look out in your yard. I've been on Lawrence Larson talking about this. There's no bugs anymore because of chemtrails. They're killing us that way also. You can look over in Spain or Sweden, I forget which one, but they actually did spray their citizens. So that is in the news also that we're not getting here in America. So I want people to wake up, see what's happening, go late, take a look and see in your yard if you have bugs. Because frankly, I've got three established trees in my yard that have died. And I have numerous friends that they, they are doing a one push to actually depopulate. I hate to tell you people, but here we go. And thank you.
Thank you.
Discern for yourself. God is always good.
Do you have another one waiting?
The next caller, please remember to press star six to unmute yourself and introduce yourself for us.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Morgan Fraser. I'm the president of Clark County Pride, a grassroots organization right here in Les Centre, supporting children and families. And I'm here to speak on behalf of something that is on the agenda later today, which is the revamping of the vendor code. And I just want to speak to the council and let them know that, you know, I've had discussions with the city officials and the police department. And I believe that there is a ton of support, including mine, to continue to uphold the vendor code and not allow vendors on public property.
Mayor Protam, this is Bronson. We will be holding a public hearing on the vendor code and comments from the public should occur during that hearing.
Okay, but this is still a general public comment period. You heard what the woman before me just said.
If the subject of the comment is the vendor code, you should make it during the public hearing, not during public comment.
Well, that, when is that?
It's on the agenda. It's later on the agenda. And you can make comment on the code when we get to that item.
Okay, because on the board that I sit, that is not how the board works. Usually you make public comments at the beginning of the meeting. You're not allowed to speak during the, the meeting item. So that's different here.
This is public comment, right? She can say what she wants?
She can. We just have that on the agenda. So the comment would be more suited when we actually have that topic come before us. That's, that's all that Bronson is trying to explain.
Yeah, I just think that I've taken some time out of my day to do it right this second because it wasn't clear. And I'll just be really brief because I have a very busy evening planned myself. And if I need to call back, I will. But basically, I was just going to let the council know that I really feel that they should uphold the code and not allow public vendors on public property without a special use permit. The, the encounter that I had at the bridge was, oh, oh, I can't even, I can't even say how horrible it was. And that's because somebody believes that they own public property because they have a permit and then they can do whatever they want because they have a city permit. And that's really not how Les Centre wants to be. That's not how we want to present ourselves. And basically, that puts a lot of liability on the city if something should happen at one of those establishments. That's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did we have another comment? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Yes. Come on up.
Al, Philo 152 West 15th Street. I want to wish everybody a happy Independence Day. You know, it's coming up very shortly. Tomorrow, of course, Farmer's Market starts over here at the church. And God bless First Amendment and God bless America.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us into our consent agenda. If we have no requests for items to be removed, may I have a motion to prove the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we had a public comment that we needed to read.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. We will back up a moment and have a public comment that was submitted that we will be reading.
This one's from Melissa Font, Fant. Dear council, I am writing to you to ask that we uphold and enforce the current city code requiring that no vendors are allowed to vend on public property. Current Washington state law allows agricultural businesses to set up along public right of ways, which means that the berries, plants, and veggies that us Les Centre residents love can still be there. But this also means that the families can feel safe using the kayak launch and walk along the Les Centre bottoms. As I was the one that sent all of you my account and video of what happened on June 4th while we were setting up for our community event, my worry is that not if, but when that happens again to someone else, the damage will be worse with them setting up on public property and the city currently refusing to uphold the current code. It will be on the city to deal with the consequences of their actions. If the city loves them as much as they scream that they do online, a private business can offer them their lot to set up in. I am also a business owner with a, with my license in the city of Vancouver. While getting my license, I agreed to a code of conduct. I implore you to consider this option as if a city business acts in a dangerous way towards city residents. Actions can be made to discontinue their business in town. Thank you, Melissa Fant.
All right, that takes us to a presentation from Waste Management and Clark County Recycling Contract. And we have Brian Schlotman with us that will be presenting the recycling contract for us. Thank you and welcome.
Mayor Tivie, council, my name is George Seidels. Actually, Brian is here, but I'm.
Apologize.
It's, it's, it's quite all right. I live at 4108 Rose Street, Vancouver, Washington. And if you'll indulge me just a moment for a personal observation, it's been over 20 years since I've addressed Les Centre City Council. And I, I just want to tell you how much of a pleasure and an honor it is to be back here. I was here 20 years ago to represent a comprehensive solid waste management plant that completely rewrote the script for how we handle waste management and recycling services in this county. And not long after that, I represented the initial interlocal agreements, putting into, into place some of the programs. So it is a great pleasure to be your new county solid waste manager, once again representing what I hope is going to be a new era of improvements for services for you and your community. Tonight, we're here specifically to talk about some changes that we're making in the residential recycling contract. And what we're looking for is a decision to choose one of the options listed above. Either a one-year extension with the current services at a $2 rate increase, or a move to every other week service without mandatory recycling at no additional charges, or move to every other week service with mandatory charges and see a 25% rate decrease. We're also expecting a CPI later this year that it's out of our control, but we expect it could be in the 6% to 8% range. If you're not able to make a decision tonight, we'll need to have something from you by the close of next week in writing, if at all possible. My predecessor in this role was the last person to visit with you on these topics. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to. Brian is also here. He's expecting, I was expecting a couple of others, but I don't see them here. So we're at your pleasure.
George, can I, can I ask a question on number two? So if we move to every other week service without mandatory recycling, you would still provide extra bins to households that want them at no charge?
So extra bins, I'm not sure that that's our practice. There's unlimited recycling service?
Okay.
Okay, so with your bins, and there's going to be a change in the size bins. The new bins are going to be larger, but we're not going to limit collection because of this change. You just set it out alongside the rest of the, your bins and we'll, Waste Connections, actually, will pick it all up.
Hey, George.
Brian Schlotman, Environment Health Director. I did speak with Waste Connections. They will provide extra bins, double bins at no charge.
Okay.
So that's a recent negotiation.
How long is the contract? Because I see a one-year extension for number one, but on option two and three, I'm not seeing a term.
It's the same contract length, but I don't know the, the current terms. I think it goes out 10 years?
Yes, following the one-year extension, it would be a 10-year contract.
So two and three are for a one-year as well. At this point, that's what we were looking at, is just doing a one-year extension and then we have the year to determine if we want to do something else. But by, in the next week, because our contract ends at the end of June, we do need to determine what we're.
Are we voting on this tonight? Because it's underneath presentations.
When I talked with Molly, I thought we were just going to go on a handshake until we get it approved at our next council meeting. Are you okay with that?
That's fine as long as we can get something in writing by the end of next week so that we can proceed.
Okay, we'll vote on it at our next council meeting.
He needs it by the end of next week. Our council meeting's not for two more weeks.
So we can, we'll, we can discuss it tonight, what we want. But Bronson, do you have any take on that?
Bronson? Can it come back for us as unfinished business since it's already been on the agenda?
So the discussion can occur. I mean, that's on the agenda. I don't think there's a contract that's been presented to council yet. So it would not be appropriate to vote on a contract tonight and you'd have to wait till next council meeting to do that.
Good evening. This is Molly Mangerich, Clark County Solid Waste.
She's with you guys.
Yeah, she's here. We're unmuting her. Unmute yourself again, please, Molly.
Hi, this is Molly Mangerich, Clark County Solid Waste. And perhaps I can provide an update on the extensions. Now Clark County has a three-month extension to get the recycling collection service decisions received from the cities. And so that's giving that some extra time. And we're now in the process of drafting a one-year extension on the current contract to allow for cities to look at entering their own contract, should they choose, for recycling. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, kinda. You said a three-month extension. When, when did that three-month extension start? Or is that in effect right now?
Just recently, we, we had all signatures on the three-month extension to the current recycling contract completed.
So we're, don't need it by the end of next week? A decision?
No, so the three-month, the three-month extension is just to address the contract that expired at the end of this month, just to buy us a little extra time. The one-year extension is, as the options are above. And with that, the current interlocal agreements, there is no new contract that needs to be signed. We pursued this process to get the takes of municipalities to see your preference of what we move forward with. So no new contract and no new interlocals are needed. This can remain a handshake deal. We would just like to know what Les Centre's preference is moving forward before we do enter that one year. And then, at the start of the next 10-year contract, new interlocals will be needed. We'll work with the cities on drafting those.
Can you remind us what the without mandatory recycling service and with mandatory service means?
Yeah, so number three was an option, Waste Connections throughout there. This is an economy of scale. So if Les Centre were willing to require recycling service of all its residents, the economy would grow, more money would be coming in, so they could actually reduce the cost to the service. As it stands, without mandatory, it would be no rate change for every other week.
Are we mandatory now?
No.
Or not? Interesting. I don't know about you guys, but everybody I've spoke to about it is willing to pay an increase to keep the recycling the same. Those are the residents that I've spoke with. Now, granted, that isn't speaking with 2,000 people or anything like that, but the handful of people said that same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I've kind of heard the same feedback, but. Just trying to think of what else.
And each one of those up there, one-year.
And is that $2 just to, added to recycling or is that garbage as well?
Just to recycle.
Just to recycle.
Strictly speaking, recycling.
Okay.
I can tell you from public health perspective, we prefer the every other week service. This really is a standard across the county. It has worked in other urban growth areas and rural areas. But we will stand by and support whatever decision Les Centre makes. So I don't want to make you think we're trying to pressure you into anything. I just want to understand what your residents.
What about the recycling bins for the breast cancer awareness, those ones? I mean, those cost people money or extra amounts of money. Are those being replaced in the same manner or are they just one and done?
I can't speak to that. That's a Waste Connections question, but I can reach out to and get a response back to you for that.
Sure.
I'm, I'm online. This is Derek Ranta with Waste Connections. If you'd like me to speak to that one, I can. The Pink Lemonade Project and the pink carts that you're speaking of will, you know, because of the changes in the service type, we'll look at each of those cases independently. We actually had not considered that, so I appreciate you bringing that up at this point. We'll, I'll, I can pull a list of who has those carts right now and we can reach out to those homes independently and see how they can handle it.
What's your guys' thoughts?
I'm kind of thinking that, in my opinion, that we take advantage of the three-month extension and maybe kind of pull the community a little bit more to see what, as maybe a more broad spectrum, what the community's looking for as far as what direction we want to go.
Does the public get to speak on this consent agenda?
I'm so sorry, I could not understand what she said.
No.
Casey?
I'm thinking. Well, change is difficult and that's what a lot of people don't like is, is change. I do understand the perspective of the, of the company with fuel costs and, and things like that. So a $2 rate increase doesn't seem unreasonable. But I guess my question then is, is at what point are we going to not have a choice in choosing what type of, of service? I would imagine that if we decided to go with our own contract as the city of Les Centre, the cost is going to increase quite a bit versus piggybacking on the, on the county's contract. So I would like to see, and I know when you guys came in and presented prior to, there was some discussion about what the difference in the, in the bins was going to be, but I don't know if there's been any actual graphic representations of that so that people understand that, you know, is it going to be a quarter again as big or is it going to be twice as big? Or I think what people are concerned about is the fact that, the way it goes right now, usually our, our bins are full with recycling every, every week, so.
Derek, can I ask you to speak to that? What's the gallon increase in the container size?
Yeah. Right now on a week. A weekly service basis, 65 gallons right now. And it'll, it'll go to 95 gallons in the new system. So it's about, you know, 50% increase. And I know that that, going to an every other week system, that doesn't, you know, pencil out necessarily. But we found in the rural parts and the city of Vancouver where they do have every other week service that that 95-gallon service is working for them. And you have the ability to put additional material like, you know, maybe cardboard that does not fit in the cart can go by the side of the cart. Or you can always get an additional cart as well because we'll carry those inventories and make them available to homes. And that's at no additional charge for those items as well on the 95.
What size is the current blue bins that we have?
Currently, they're 65 gallons.
Speaking just a little bit more broadly, I mean, the evolution to every other week your recycling and yard waste service has been going on for a while. And what a lot of jurisdictions have found is they can actually see fewer trucks down the roads by having, you know, the yard waste picked up on the off week and the recycling picked up on the other week rather than running so many trucks down the road. And that's been found to be welcome in, in a lot of communities. But you all have to make your own decisions for your community members, of course.
What, how does council feel in terms of number three, moving to mandatory service? Is it time? I think with growth, we have to really look at what's happening in the community and how we maintain it.
Well, I know when I drive through the neighborhoods, as I said when you guys gave your presentation last time, I see containers that are full, not only my own, but throughout the neighborhood. And when I asked where the studies were done, if they were actually done in the city of Les Centre, I was told no. Nobody had actually looked in the city of Les Centre to see what the capacities were or what was being recycled or how full the bins were. They said they went out towards North County and such like that, and then into Vancouver. So without an actual study of what is happening, I.
We know not everyone is taking advantage of recycling.
Sure. And I, and that was one of my fears is that, okay, so if you fill up your bin, I'm a person that doesn't want trash in my house. I'm going to put it in the garbage, right? It's going to go there regardless at that point, even though my wife's going to be upset with me going, no, you need to recycle. I just don't want trash stacked up. So if there's 500 me's, imagine what that turns into. up. So, if there's 500 me's, imagine what that turns into.
What is the, what is the change to the actual garbage service going to be?
I can, I can speak to that. So, there will be, there'll be no change to the garbage service itself. It'll stay whatever service level you have. What we are doing is we're rolling out roll carts in August to homeowners, anybody that's on garbage service right now. So, we're mapping out, if you have a 32-gallon can at home right now, we'll be delivering a 32-gallon cart. And if you have two 32s, you'll get a 64 and so forth. And that'll be rolling out in August. But other than that, general service levels, you know, weekly, everything else will stay the same. If you're a weekly customer, you'll stay on weekly service. And, you know, to the larger cart, you know, you're right, we have not done a study specifically in La Centre, and every community is different. But we've been, like I said, we've been offering this service since 2009 in the rural portions of the county, which I think in some of the, you know, some of the more outer-lined cities, you know, they're similar in nature and have similar dynamic to the rural populations. And it has been a successful system in there. And we do see also that our carts have about 25% garbage in them already. So, the recycle cart itself has already been used as a garbage vestable, unfortunately. So, we're seeing a pretty significant portion of material that doesn't belong in the recycle cart to start with. So, I think there's some opportunities for improvement in the system as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, did you say that the, if we wanted two carts, we can have two carts at no additional cost? So, that would be 95 times two?
For recycling, yes.
For recycling?
Yes.
Service is going down, but the container, or the containment amount is up, if you did two carts.
Compromise.
Yeah.
Well, there's not too many cost decreases that are occurring
No.
right now. And so, seeing, seeing that option, I think we need to strongly consider, consider that.
I agree. So, how do you get that out to the public, that there is no cost for an extra container? How's the public going to get or be aware of that?
That guess is something I wanted to touch on, Councilor Strobin. So, you talked about the three-month extension. We are hoping for a decision from council fairly soon. I think we could probably get by with the next council meeting decision, but there will be an outreach and education process to that, and we're hoping to start that during the three-month extension that we give ourselves. So, we would prefer not to wait for a response through the three months.
For sure.
Any other questions?
I guess why, one more thing. I mean, it's a little bit more reassuring to me that I was under the understanding that garbage was going to be every other week as well. So, I guess that's quite a bit more reassuring, that we're going to at least continue that service, because that would be interesting. So, I guess my viewpoint of it has kind of changed a little bit.
Maria, if I can ask, so, we can't vote on it tonight, but are we, can we say what our preferred number is, so that they have their handshake agreement, and then we can vote on it at the next meeting?
Bronson?
Yeah, it's fine for you to indicate what your preferences are for a future agreement. It's just, we can't approve an agreement that we don't have in front of us tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm definitely leaning towards option three at this point.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my...
I'm with Casey on that one, yeah. I agree.
Thank you all very much for your time, and I look forward to coming out and visiting sometimes when we don't have business on the agenda, and I can just get reacquainted with the community out here. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, it takes us to council staff reports and announcements, unless I've missed something else. And first up is Mayor's Report. And this evening, some of my thunder was stolen already, Al, but I'll forgive you for that. And the farmer's market, once again, will start tomorrow, so we'll have the wonderful vendors available. And it's continuing on Thursday nights throughout the summer. And please step out, enjoy the evenings in downtown, and support our local vendors. Concerts in the Park Series also starts this Saturday. Countryside Ride will be performing. Don't ask me anything about the bands, but do support it. 2407 Band will be performing next Saturday, and Kevin Self and the Tornados will be performing on July 9. And we thanks, give thanks to Mona Bean for working diligently and organizing all of this for the community. It's a lot of work behind the scenes, and we appreciate that. Just a reminder that city offices will be closed Monday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. And with that, I'd also like to remind everyone that in the city of La Centre, discharge of fireworks is prohibited except on July 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and July 4th from 9:00 a.m. to midnight. The Mayor's Town Hall will not be held on Wednesday, July 6. And we also want to remind everyone of the citywide garage sale that will be held on July 9. So, get out there and find your treasures. Next is Attorney's Report, and we will turn that over to City Attorney Bronson Parther, who's joining us by phone.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm obviously joining you remotely tonight, and I'm doing it without video, just because the bandwidth that I have available isn't that great. But I'd just like to wish everybody a happy 4th of July, and be safe. No other report.
Thank you, Bronson. Next, we have council comments, and we will begin with Councilmember Casper.
Thank you. Good evening. Not a lot to report on tonight. I am attending the AWC Conference, the Washington Cities Conference that's in Vancouver this week. Today was the first full day of it, and there were some other city staff that have also been there. So, pretty impressive lineup of speakers and some really good quality training. So, we're all fortunate to be able to attend that, and I've enjoyed it so far. So, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out. Good to see everybody. I don't have a whole lot. I just want to say, on Wednesday, the Levy Committee had an awareness meeting, or like kind of an awareness get-together at the stadium, and there was quite a good turnout there. I think Frank's Barbecue is out there serving food. And then, there's also, they're doing a football camp as well, put on by the high school. And if anybody wants to get involved with the Levy, Peter is here today, so you can talk to him, and he could get you in touch with the right people. Other than that, yeah. Happy 4th of July to everybody, and enjoy this nice weather, finally.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Strobin?
Yeah, I have to agree, the nice weather. It's a change. The rain sure didn't help my hair grow any. I want to wish everybody a happy 4th of July. Is the Lions going to be doing fireworks this year? I just want to give a shout-out to them, and make sure that you go out to support your local events out here and people. They sure do appreciate it, and they do a lot for the community. I also wanted to thank, I think I seen Jim and Al and everybody down there on the bridge with the flags, and picking up things and cleaning it up. I wanted to thank you guys for that. Do we know or have a plan for the park to go open, the water feature there at the park?
I believe it was set to be turned on today, the first day of not-school.
All right. Well, hopefully people can go down there and enjoy themselves, and take advantage of some of the great services the city has to offer. With that, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I did see kids out there playing in it today.
All right.
I too, under my council member, I get to do double duty here. Councilmember Report, just wish everyone a very safe and beautiful Independence Day with family and friends, and just enjoy this wonderful community that we have. And, you know, just be thankful for what we have here. How many communities can say that? And I think we tend to take it for granted at times. So, that's all I want to say. Next is staff reports, and we have the police staff report to begin with, and Chief Richardson will be presenting the report.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and council and community. For May 2022, just for, we'll go over the crime report. We had 13 reported crimes in May of 2022. In May of 2021, we had 15. Primarily, the largest increase in crimes reported in May, we had four, excuse me, three thefts from vehicles, which all were window smashes, which are unusual. So, somebody went through and smashed windows of vehicles to actually get into them. We had one attempt theft of motor vehicle parts, which was a catalytic converter. If you didn't know, state of Washington's number one in catalytic converter thefts, and we're number four in auto thefts. First quarter of 2022 versus the first quarter of 2021 statewide, auto thefts were up 88%. And we had a brandishing of firearm, which is the weapon violation, and that was a landlord-tenant dispute, where the landlord displayed a firearm, and he was arrested and cited for that, and the firearm was seized. I won't go through all of the different crimes, but that was the majority of what happened in May. And then on page two is just a list of the property crimes that occurred throughout the city, primarily the window smashes I was talking about. And also, since it was a theft out of a vehicle and they smashed the window, that also counted as a vandalism. One of the, another theft that we had was the last one, this is a theft of a trailer and gutter machine, which is, it's pretty expensive, it was about $35,000. It was sitting on a trailer, and they stole that. We haven't recovered that as of yet. And page three, our reported arrests, we had one traffic offense we made an arrest for. We had one motor vehicle theft, where we arrested the driver for driving a stolen vehicle. And then, again, we had the brandishing of the firearm, which I've alluded to just previously. Calls for service have declined in May, and obviously, primarily officer-involved activity, it went down to about 33 events. And if you look at community-initiated events, those also went down to six-day events. So, both of those have dropped, which brought the total from April of 159 down to May of 101. Calls for service, again, when we compare this year to last year, significant decrease. Last year in May of 2021, we had 187 total calls for service, and 101 of those were officer-initiated, excuse me, 102 of those were community-initiated, and then 85 were police-initiated. If you look at this month comparison, this May, you can see both of those decline significantly, which actually brought a total down again from 187 to 101. And then on the next page is just the police reports, and where the police reports come from.
Chief, can you go back to that slide, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can we zoom back in? I just wanted to see those numbers one more time.
Okay.
The red was the call-ins, and then blue is officer-initiated?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's obviously because we don't have any officers, or the right amount of officers to cover?
Well, I think it's got to do with a couple of things. Number one is the fact, you're right, it would be staffing. That's what drives officer-initiated calls. But the other thing that's changed quite a bit is just, you know, we don't enforce drug laws anymore. So, driving around through the gas stations and walking up on people using drugs in the car and searching the car and making arrests, we, everybody's kind of gotten out of that business right now. Because, you know, so there's, because you have the referrals, you have to do three referrals before you can even do a booking, and you can, and then a prosecutor can also do referrals. So, there's, there's nobody that's really making drug arrests anymore in the state of Washington. So, that's what's kind of driving...
Be interesting to see the numbers from 1920 as a comparison with 21 and 22.
You want to see 2020s? Is that what you said? No, I don't have them, but I'll certainly give them for you. They're, I can, they're not, they're not hard to get. We'll have to look at them. Obviously, 2020, when you start looking at 2020, 2021, especially 2020, because of COVID, a lot of that data is kind of skewed. So, because we were telling police, our officers to social distance, so they weren't making any stops. So, that might be a bad year. But let me go back and look at 2018, 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As far as community messaging, again, if people, you know, lock your cars, take your valuables out of your cars overnight, especially, you know, your cellphones, purses, wallets. In the past, we've had people keep their handguns in their cars. Don't do that. On May 2nd through the 4th, I participated in the selection of the city of Vancouver's Police Chief. So, I went, they went through that process for several days, and Chief Jeff Mori is going to be sworn in, I believe, not this, next Thursday, not this Thursday, but a week from tomorrow. So, he's the new chief. The former chief's retiring, his last, his retirement ceremony will be on Friday, but he's actually got about three more days of work. So, Jeff Mori will be the new Vancouver Police Chief. I met with Chief Brooks on May 12 regarding police operations. I attended a workshop at La Centre United on May 12. On May 25, Brian and I met with the school superintendent regarding this gate, security gate issue that we talked about previous council, and came up with some ideas on that. On May 26, I reviewed the draft Washington Attorney General's Use of Force Policy. This is a statewide policy that the AG is going to put out, that the cities can all mirror or approve. There are some issues with it, so all the chiefs and sheriffs throughout the state of Washington are giving input on it. And May 25 through the 27, I covered battleground police departments for on command, on call, because their police chief and their lieutenant were both out. So, in case there was an emergency, I covered for them for having some kind of management presence. Officer Langlos went to patrol rifle training, which is good. He wasn't patrol certified to carry patrol rifle, so now he is, and especially with all the activity you've seen around schools and all the focus on school shootings, that was something we thought was important for us to continue. And again, La Centre police officers went through three hours of training on duty to intervene, which is, simply means that officers, any other officers engaged in misconduct, using excessive force, they have the duty to intervene, and there's a policy and procedures with that. Since May, I just wanted to bring you up to date that on June 6, Jeff Swanson and myself met with Chief Brooks and the city manager at Ridgefield, and had a discussion regarding the contract. It was mostly for us to present what we were looking for, as far as how we got to where we were, what kind of contract we're looking for, what kind of coverage, what kind of service we were looking for, and those kinds of things. And talked about hypothetically paying for services or proportionality of services. So, that's kind of where we are right now. They asked for some information regarding our budget, our workload, staff analysis, and some other items that we produced. They also asked for some draft contracts from other agencies that, that contract out law enforcement services. So, we provided those to them, and we're, we've gotten everything to them, and now it's kind of in their court, so to speak. But I would encourage the council to reach out to your fellow council members in Ridgefield, and take them out to lunch, and have a conversation with them if you can, about how important it would be to, for us, and how we'd really love to have a contract with Ridgefield to pay for 24-hour police service in the city of La Centre. In addition to that, I met with the school superintendent this month. We've had several, we had a meeting and several emails going back and forth after the shoot, active shooter in Texas. And a couple of our concerns that we all agree on are, number one, communications within the school buildings. If you don't know, that was one of the things that happened in Texas, and it happens in almost every school shooting there is, is the radio communications does not generally work in these older... generally work in these older buildings, especially like high schools, because they're so big. And so, we need to have technology to rectify that in our schools. So, we're going to have conversations about that. The newest school has the right technology in, in place, the older schools do not, and it's not a cheap fix, obviously. You know, you're talking probably anywhere between $70,000 to $100,000 per school site to bring it up to standards, so police radios and fire radios work within the building. So, that's something that we've had an ongoing conversation with. Key access, I think we've resolved that. We had conversations regarding access to the buildings in an emergency. And finally, we discussed some training issues, and, and I know that I provided some information to the superintendent regarding having some instructors that can help out with the training they want to do with their staff. But in addition to that, Vancouver Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and Battleground Police Department are all going to do active shooter training next, next fall. So, we're going to make sure that we're involved in that, and that our officers participate in, in those kinds of things, so that we're all on the same page. So, everybody's kind of moving forward. It's just that it takes sometimes conversations, sometimes it takes time, and other times it takes money. And we're just trying to locate different sources for that. I think you're going to see the federal government come out, probably with some school safety money in the next budget, which would be nice. It would be nice to be able to fund physical security of schools and communications improvements and those kinds of things, and not necessarily just bodies, because we really need to make sure that the sites are secure. So, that's something we're looking forward to, and, and I'll keep an eye out for any grants that we can do to apply to help the school district and ourselves out. So, that's really all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Excuse me. Have you met with Woodland as well?
Oh, I have not met with Woodland. I do have an email response that says they're still working on it, and that's kind of where I've left it right now.
Do we know how many overtime shifts per month are being filled at this moment, approximately?
I can tell you, off the top of my head, we had overtime shift tonight, last, yesterday, the day before yesterday. I can glance at my phone and tell you, but we've had a pretty good, June has been a pretty good month as far as overtime coverage. So, we've been pretty fortunate to have 24-hour coverage most of the time during this month. But it varies. Obviously, it can vary day to day. Sunday, we were supposed to have 24-hour coverage, but somebody calling sick, we tried to get somebody to fill, we couldn't find anybody to fill on short notice, which would have been the same if we had our own police department and somebody calling sick and nobody wanted to work the overtime, we wouldn't have any coverage. So, so far, it's been pretty successful. And we continue to fill overtime slots and, and put it out there. I've reached out to Battleground to see if they were interested. They're one of the agencies that initially wasn't, and I'm still trying to work with them, try to encourage them to participate. And same with CAMIS Police Department, but other than that, the other three agencies we've been working with, the sheriff has been phenomenal, and obviously, La Shugal and Ridgefield have pinched in too, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, Chief, real quick, just if you know off the top of your head, those reports that you were given for the month of May, are most of those police-initiated calls, are those our own officers, or are these the people coming in?
When I, anything that's, anybody that's working either our officers or is working overtime in Le Center on behalf of the city, all those calls for service, whether they're, are whether the community generated or officer-generated, or combined, everybody. So, theoretically, if you have a sheriff's deputy that's working in our city, or Woodland or Ridgefield, those officer-initiated activity, when they're working under the Le Center unit number, because they come in as a special unit, those are cataloged, tied to our city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry, I got one, just brought on one more thing. Would it be worth it to maybe have a workshop to see what our proposed, what you propose to the city of Ridgefield for a contract, just to see, you know, what services you're asking them for, or what they're, or what information they're looking for from us as well?
I can tell you that this was an initial meeting. They were very limited on the conversation that they would have with us, that it was more of a listening session on, for them to listen to what, kind of what hypothetically we were looking for. I don't think we're at that point now where we have anything that's, that's hard numbers or facts, because we really need to hear back from them that they're even interested first.
For sure.
And then we can start having those conversations, and then I'd be more than happy to do a workshop or whatever you would like.
Okay.
I think it's very important now at this point for the council to reach out to their council. And again, you know, this is more the political side of the question, is, hey, do we have the ability to pay for services? Do we, is this a short-term or long-term contract? To me, it's got to be a long-term contract, like five years, at least five years, because they're going to have to hire employees and equipment, and there has to be something on their, you know, it can't be something where they're hiring employees and two, 12 months later, we're saying, no, we're going to go our own way, because they have, they have money, they have to invest. So, I think it's important for the, our council to assure them that, hey, we're committed to a contract. We don't know what the details are, but we're committed to a contract, whatever that, you know, ultimately, we'll figure out what that is. But, you know, we have the ability to pay for the contract, we have money in the bank, and we're really, really in the right to check, that's, that's a concern of theirs. And I think those are things that you need to have conversations, councilperson to councilperson to, because those are policy decisions, not only for us, but for their city too. And I think it would be advantageous for you as councilmembers to reach out and get involved in the process now. And then once we start hammering out a contract and getting some ideas, we can have a workshop and come back and say, okay, this is what, what your priorities are.
Right. I have to agree, I think we do need to start stepping up, because time, time has taken away, and we're over a year, or a year and four months, so we really need to start pushing so we have answers, so we know which direction we're actually going to go. Because if the contracts aren't going to happen, then we need to start hiring, or at least figure out how we're going to start hiring, so.
Bronson, I don't know if you can jump in on this, but because of the fact that, that the city of Ridgefield has a city manager rather than a, a strong mayor type of government, the council of the city of Ridgefield, I don't think is comfortable having some of those conversations, or maybe that they were given the direction to let the city staff handle that first. So, I guess before we get too crazy and start bombarding them, we, we need to be respectful of what their process is.
Yes, so, there's no legal prohibition on US councilmembers approaching councilmembers of the Ridgefield council, but it may be that their perception of their roles, the city manager's role, is at this point, the city manager is the one taking the lead on any discussions, and if that's their position, you know, you just need to respect that. But there's no reason you can't at least approach a councilmember from Ridgefield and, and express your interest and see if they're willing to have a conversation.
Yeah, and last week, I did meet with Mayor Lindsay from Ridgefield, and she politely declined to have that discussion. But again, it was, it was still a very positive meeting, so I just want to throw out there that we don't want to be too pushy. We want them on our side.
We also don't have lots of time, though, Casey, so we do kind of have to lean a little bit harder than just kind of saying hi. So, you know, one of our main priorities as a city is to protect the residents, protect them and, and keep them safe, and, and at least have that assurance. And in my perspective, we're not up to par on that at all, and that falls on council as well, so I think.
I don't disagree, but when the response is, I'm not having that conversation, the message was taken.
Right. So, yeah, yeah, you'll definitely, I'll reach out myself as well, so.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Takes us to the financial staff report, and Ms. Maria Swiner-Inzki will present.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Servini, city council, and citizens. Tonight, I present you with my June staff report. The May sales tax disbursement was $62,326 compared to $79,458 a year ago. Some of the trainings and webinars I attended were on benefits fraud, lawsuits, dining in the public right-of-way, a legislative update on public records and open public meeting bills, and I'm also attending the AWC Annual Conference this week. I also attended a workshop entitled "Discovering and Overcoming Your Unconscious Bias," and that was sponsored by ESD 112. And pursuant to RCW 43.09.230, annual reports are to be certified and filed with the state auditor's office within 150 days after the close of each fiscal year. This year, senior accountant Riley Barbera submitted the annual report for the city on May 27. Highlights of the report include, our total ending cash balance across all funds was $19,114,000, of which $6 million was reported as restricted, 3.1 million reported as committed by council's authority, 5.4 million was reported as assigned, and 4.6 million was reported as unassigned. Our total state grant receipts reported was 1.8 million, with the largest receipt being the City Hall renovation project at 1.211 million. The city has reported 1.9 million in long-term liabilities. The breakdown of that is 1.7 million for the Public Works Trust Fund loan, just over $94,000 for the pension-related obligations, and approximately $120,000 for the liability to pay unearned, I'm sorry, to pay earned and not taken comp leave to employees. The city is currently on a two-year audit cycle. The financial information submitted for the fiscal year 2021 will be audited in combination with fiscal year 2020, which will happen later this fall. Next up are the gambling revenue. As you can see, the revenue continues to be strong. And then lastly, the Budget Advisory Committee held our first meeting of the year last week. We were presented with the first quarter financial report. We looked at cardroom revenue and discussed the upcoming budgeting and planning process. This year's members of the Budget Advisory Committee are Mayor Greg Thornton, Citizens' Deanna Sutter, and Jack Davis, and then councilmembers Liz Servini and Tom Strobin, and staff Riley Barbera and myself. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, real quick, Maria, the difference on the tax, the tax revenue, what, can you go back up to that real quick?
Yes.
So, 62, 79, so about $17,000 difference? And last year, it was because of the, the school, right? Why is the revenue still up there? It's, that's still pretty high.
It is. We are still getting strong Amazon sales, and so, a lot, a lot more people are buying versus shopping. My most recent report is Amazon is number three in our, in our sales tax revenue. And then also, the, this building, still bringing in, was still bringing in some tax revenue at the beginning of this year. So, I will hopefully, in the next few months, have an update, and we can see what our top 10 sales tax contributors are for the year. But yeah, it does continue to be strong, which is over what we have estimated for the year.
Yeah, that's really good. It's good to hear. And then we were going to do a workshop or something along for the cardrooms at some point?
Well, we did discuss it at the, at the Budget Advisory Committee. Yeah, I, I do have some information, because I'm not really sure, like, what you wanted to know about them, but I do have some of the breakdowns. So, I wanted to let you know, just kind of a general overview for those of you that don't know how the cardroom revenue works. So, the way that it's set up is, on the first $400,000, they pay 5% on gross revenue. On the next, from $400,000 to $700,000, they pay 7.5%. From $700,000 to $1 million, they pay 10%. From $1 million to $1.3 million, they pay 12.5% on gross revenue, and then over $1.3 million, they're paying 15% on gross revenue. So, right now, we have one cardroom that is doing significantly better than the other cardroom. So, in January, one cardroom had 7.1, was paying, their, their average rate was 7.1%. And then the other cardroom average rate was 5.1%, and overall, the rate was 6.5%. And I can put this in a, in an email to you, but just so you kind of have an overview. In February, one cardroom was paying 7.6% was their rate, and then the other cardroom was 6.2%, and so, overall, it was 7%. And then, in March, things continuing to get better, one cardroom was 8.2%, and then the other cardroom was 6%, and so, overall, it was 7.4% was what they were paying. And then in April, one cardroom was paying 8.9%, that was the highest that we had seen on, on any, any year for several years. And then, one cardroom was paying 6.4%, so overall, the average amongst the two cardrooms were 8%. So, I don't know really what you want to dig into, if you, if you were thinking of charging them more, or?
No, just getting back to the pre-COVID levels, right? Because we started that sliding scale, what, 2019, I think it was, was it 2019? When we started the sliding scale? Because I think in 2018 or something, we were fixed, it was a fixed rate, it was lowered because the revenue had dropped.
We changed after the construction issue and the loss.
Yeah, and, and so, now you look at those numbers, and we're all the way back to 2017 levels almost. I mean, that's pretty, pretty good numbers, or at least the second-best numbers since 2017. So, is it worth us looking at putting back a static amount for all the cardrooms instead of doing a sliding scale? That's what my question was that last time.
Okay.
And still remains.
Okay.
But at this point, you'd be hurting the other cardroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, and did these ones, did this one sell? Did these sell?
It's not final yet. We've not gotten the word that it's 100% done.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and for the record, when it does sell, the previous owner is still part owner.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings, and Mr. Brian Cass will present the vendor code.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. So, before you this evening for consideration for adoption is, I mean, ordinance 22-04, which will amend chapter 540 of our municipal code, which governs street vendors. These, in the current code, are those vendors that operate out of movable locations. Our current code does not allow vendors to operate on public property, which would include parks and right-of-way, and requires a police background check for all vendors that are seeking a license, as it's currently called. So, based on council and community feedback, staff have been working on an update to this code for the past several months. This update would allow for vending on public property in conjunction with a city-approved special event, such as our days or farmer's market, which is starting back up here, as was discussed earlier. Vendors that are selling as a part of a special event would fall under the special event permit requirements, it would not require a separate vendor permit from the city. Additionally, vendors on private property that are vending with the permission of the private property owner would not require a city vendor permit. However, as discussed previously, all vendors still have to have a city and state business license. Based on discussion at the May 25 meeting, provision has been added to the draft code that allows the city to designate and regulate areas on public property for vending that outside of a special event permit. The process to designate these areas and adopt policies to regulate them would be a separate council action, in a future council action. Additionally, as previously was discussed, we've updated the code to capture door-to-door sales and solicitors. All vendors that are required to get a permit would be required to do a background check. It will be a, not a police-driven background check, but a more high-level one that, sort of like, if you're applying for a tenancy or something like that. of like, if you're applying for a tenancy or something like that. Any conviction of felonies or misdemeanors would disqualify applicants from receiving a city vending permit if those convictions were related to something regarding vending. We would also require that applicants provide proof of insurance to the city as a part of the permitting process to assure that there's liability coverage to protect the city. So with all these changes, the title of the code has been changed to read "vendors, peddlers, and solicitors." We've revised the term in the code from "license" to "permit." And we've also updated staff references in the code to match our organizational structure here in the city. We've also clarified how this rule applies or does not apply to vending by farmers and gardeners that are selling their wares that they have produced to be consistent with state law. So there is overall no budget impact to the city on this. At the next revision to the fee schedule, we will add a fee to cover basically the background check cost and staff time associated with processing that. Anticipated that would be a minimal fee somewhere in the $10 to $15 range for the annual permit. So with that, happy to answer any questions, and staff is recommending that council reopen and conclude the public hearing, and then consider this ordinance for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian, I just got to tell you, it's refreshing to receive phone calls from staff and asking our opinions of what we'd like to see, and then starting to incorporate them into the, what you see forth here. I gotta, I gotta take my hat off to you. I think it's a great step. It's a great way to build relationships with council and members of the, of the city and such, and I think you did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Questions?
Just to be clear, this doesn't, not impacted the current, that people, vendors on private property or in public property?
Yeah, so the, the discussion we've had, I think is previously discussed, is that we have that project that's starting up here on Pacific, or excuse me, on the Center Road. I actually heard from the contractor that they're planning on starting that work in early July, so coming up here pretty quick. So that area where the vendors are currently vending in the gravel parking area will be closed, that that area can be used for staging for construction. Once adopted, this ordinance, there was a 30-day effective period, and then the, the goal would be to begin enforcement and implementation of this, you know, during and after the construction there concludes.
And the R days still has an exemption for this year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have access to the code?
I have it in front of me, yes.
Can you bring up 540070? Please?
That would be page eight of the ordinance document.
And you'll have to make it larger for most of us.
That was 540070 operational requirements?
And...
Yeah, page eight of the ordinance.
Which, which part of the code are you wanting to look at?
It's the one that says, designate locations on public property where vending is allowed, and establish a policy governing assignment and time limitations at these locations. And I guess my question is, it's kind of vague, and how do we enforce it?
So that, there's some additional discussion relating to that question in a following section of the code here. One second, let me find it.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. So that would be Section C3 of the same 070. So it says, Section C says that the city, by and through Director of Administrative Services, shall, and then Item 3 is designate locations on public property where vending is allowed, and establish your policy governing assignment and time limitations at these locations. And staff's thoughts and recommendation on that would be, if that is something that council wishes to pursue, we would prepare those locations and those rules and bring them back to council for consideration through a resolution.
Yeah.
So at this point, there would not be any public vending, or any vending in a public right-of-way?
Outside of special events.
Correct.
But this leaves the option to be able to designate those locations, should council wish to in the future.
Gives me heartburn. All in, because some of the issues that we've been dealing with already, how would we even begin to enforce the actual ordinance? To me, in reading that, we're right back to where we were, with an ordinance that we're not going to be able to enforce.
If council chooses, we can strike that.
Yes. I did also consult with the city attorney regarding some of the issues that have been raised with some of our current vendors. In the Section 540080, revocation of permits, there is a, the final Section E reads, conducting business permitted under this chapter in such a manner to constitute breach of peace or menace to health, safety, or general welfare of the public. So, you know, if we had a permitted vendor that was, you know, acting in a, in a way that was not consistent with that section, there is a path to remove them from being able to vend.
I like that section. It was just the other one that I had a lot of pause, just in reading, because it, it just didn't really have any meat-on-the-bone type thing.
Sure. And that was something that we, you know, we were trying to make, you know, as, as minimal of a change to accommodate the discussion that council was having. So that's, as Maria mentioned, that's something that is open for discussion, can be modified or removed as a part of the consideration for council this evening.
Yeah, I think, as council, we get into a scenario where we try to find compromise and accomplish, in the end, what is best for the community in the long term. And, like you mentioned earlier, change is hard, but we're growing so quickly, and the additional traffic that we're going to continue to see with the new houses and apartments that are coming in. My concern is that type of language in an ordinance would leave the staff without the ability to even really dig in and, and enforce it. So I guess that, that particular sentence, I, I would recommend we omit. What's your thoughts, chief? Couldn't we enforce it?
I think we've had this conversation. I'm, I'm, I understand the reason why people want to have the ability to have vendors on public right-of-way, and we're not talking about the vegetable vendor, the farmers, those kinds of things. But I can tell you, based on just recent experience, that it's very difficult for the police to do any enforcement, especially, you know, for instance, let's say on the bridge down there, where, let's say, people start arguing over who gets what space. How many cars get parking spots do we each allocate for my customers? What happens if you have more people with business licenses that show up, then there is space? How do we allocate where everybody gets to sit up, when we don't really have any authority to do that? Yeah, what happens if two Mexican food vendors show up at the same spot, and they're arguing over, they're taking each other's business away? I mean, we get into a lot of these things. I do like the idea of allowing vendors on public right-of-way if it's a special event. You know, if you're having our days, if you're having a Pride Festival, if you're having whatever kind of event you're having, and you're having a registration booth, and you're having vendors that are selling things that are tied to that event, I think it's a lot easier for us to come across, because you're either a member, you're either part of that event or you're not. But I think where we are running into problems like this, and we don't want to be the referee, and, and where we can get into some liability, is when we start trying to pick and choose. And so for the police department, the best thing for us to do is to just tell everybody to, we keep the peace, make sure nobody's throwing any punches at one another, but at the end of the day, we're going to refer people back to the, the city and say, you know, go talk to the city and let them straighten it out, because that's ultimately what's going to happen. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
So the question I have is, the way, the way that I read that sentence number three that says designate the locations, that's a, that's an obligation by the city and the Director of Administrative Services. The way I read it, it already says earlier in the ordinance that it is, that the, the vendor permits are only valid with, in conjunction with a...
Special event.
Another special event. That being said, the Director of, Director of Administrative Services shall reserve the right to limit the number of any permits, reserve the right to temporary close of ending unit, designate the locations on public property. And I, the way I'm reading it is that, that means that wherever the public event is being held, whether it's the Christmas event where we have Fourth Street, or our days where they're up at, at Holly Park, it gives you the ability to say that you can only have your, your vending operation within the confines of the existing event. If you didn't have this in there, then technically, they could set up wherever they wanted on public property. It wouldn't have to be within the confines of whatever the permitted event is. Bronson?
Bronson, are you there?
Yeah, sorry. I went to that section in 070A2. So vendors are allowed in public parks and public right-of-way, in areas designated by the city for vending, or when in conjunction with a city-permitted event. So it's both. It's not just when in conjunction with a city-permitted special event. So I think if I understood what you were asking council members, whether it was just restricted to when a special event's occurring, and the answer is no, it's not.
And again, to clarify, the, in Item 070A2, the areas designated by the city for vending was added as a part of that, as a result of that discussion at the last council meeting, as was Item 070C3, about designating locations on public property. So those, you know, if council wished to only allow vending on public property in conjunction with special events, you could strike the, those two portions and sort of go back to the code as it was previously presented at the last meeting.
I think what you stated, if we, if we specifically link it to the special events, then it's very clear. But I think the statement, the, the one sentence, doesn't link everything together from a legal perspective, that alone. So that was my only question, in terms of, the wording was very vague, and it didn't link it to special events, per se. So how would we go about managing and enforcing it?
So I think implementation...
And if I'm all wet, you can tell me.
I, I, the intent, at least, and maybe Bronson can weigh in, but the intent was that that Item C3 sort of spell out how that designation and how the rules and regulations that apply to those designated areas, you know, is implemented.
I like how it's written like that, personally. But Liz is right, how do you enforce it? But then that goes along with the lines of everything else. How do you enforce dog leash laws? How do you enforce, enforce the licenses on them? We, we have nobody to enforce any of the rules that we've set forth. So, but I do like the wording of it. I, I understood it clearly.
Yeah, so I missed the "or" in that very first portion of it, but Number 3 gives us the ability to designate the location on the permit that's being issued.
I think that's great. I think it's...
So this would still allow vendors to set up on public property with a city designation of the area?
Yeah, so as written, if the city took action through the Administrative Services Director to establish, you know, a location, say, you know, the, the bridge is probably a bad example from a traffic perspective, but say, the parking lot at the old CDD building or something like that, you know, somewhere where there's, you know, you could designate a spot where there would be, you know, safe traffic flow, and then would also establish rules, you know, if that's, you know, there's 10 spaces and it's first come, first served, or however, you know, it's drawing straws, whatever the, the methodology of regulating those is. Again, the, the staff's suggestion would be that that gets drafted and comes to council for consideration as a, as a resolution, rather than being as just a staff, purely staff-driven thing, just to ensure that the, the policy's in alignment with the council's wishes.
I think it's great. I mean, you, you still get everything at that point. You get the people that are doing the little startups on the side of the road, as long as they go through the right legal process, right? We're not just shutting it down, saying, no, you don't get to put a spot there, sorry, it's never going to happen, we don't do it in public. You'll have to find somebody's private property to, to set up a shop at, you know? So I, I think it's encouraging, and it does help businesses, you know, it's, it promotes.
And I think to, to address Liz's concern, we just have to make the commitment as city staff to go and make sure that those are being enforced.
Right. I agree with Casey.
Good luck with that. All right, any other questions?
We need to do a public hearing.
We'd like to open up the, it is, is it really?
7:59.
It's like, oh, wow. It is now 7:59. We'd like to open up the public hearing. And any public comments from the audience? We'll begin there, and then we'll move to the phone. Just a moment. Any audience comments? All right. Okay, and you can press star six to unmute your phone, and please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Kimberly Elgin. I live on Sixth Street here in the center. So passing criminal checks is a great thing for vendors. However, I'm all, and I'm for all vendors to participate in public, on proper, excuse me, on public property and on private property, as we must curb government overreach. Public property, and I do appreciate, I believe it was mayor that mentioned that, you know, I think people can govern themselves and be civil and peaceful. Public property is just that, is public property. So I will say now that the Agenda 21 2030 I mentioned in the community comments, that they want our properties. One of the things is, is they regulate the heck out of us, of properties that we already own, but then they put it under the government, or your local, whatever, city council, whatever it is. So it is a United Nations entity right now, as we speak here in Clark County. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that people keep civil, and that they can govern themselves. I will say now, it is on record that in his own words, Biden said, "There will be another pandemic." I want to wake Clark County up now to this fact, that that's what he has said. Frankly, he's not my president, he's not a president, but that's my opinion, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and thank you for being in the Los Angeles City Council, and thank you, Mayor. I hope you're feeling well.
Thank you, Kimberly. Anyone else? Press star six.
Hi, my, my name is Danielle Witter. I'm a citizen here in the center.
I'm a citizen here in the center. And I just wanted to comment, I was there the other day when they're, with my young children down at the bridge and, you know, the, the speed limit there goes from 25 to 4550. And somebody was flipping off one of the vendors and while flipping that vendor off, almost rear-ended a car and swerved into the, into that public area. And so I just, I really hope, you know, that we're, if we're considering the, you know, vendors in public land, that we are really careful about where we allow that to happen because that bridge has, is pretty dangerous there. The roads right next, you know, cars are going really, really fast right next to that area that there's vendors. And then I also had a question about this section that talks about the vendors' items having to be inside their structure. And it seemed kind of vague in what that meant. Does the structure have to have walls? Can they, you know, hang things on their structure? Can they, so I was just a little bit concerned about that section. And then also the times of operation, you know, are we going to have vendors operating from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, right at the entrance of our town? That would go toward, towards where this is occurring, but I'm talking about the bridge because that's where everything's occurring now. But those are just some of my thoughts as a, as a citizen that drives in and out of here, just like everyone else.
Thank you. Do we have any public hearing comments to be read? None to be read.
Let me ask Morgan if she wants to speak. Morgan?
Morgan, are you still on? Sounds like we've lost her.
There's none to be read besides what he said earlier.
All right. It is now 8:03 and we would like to close the public hearing at this time. And any additional comments from council?
Wasn't it decided that we were going to have barricades out there? That was not decided?
I can weigh in on that. So at the, I believe it was the last meeting, we awarded the contract. Council chose not to award Schedule C, which would have installed those barricades at this time.
But we are looking into a...
We're looking into a future separate project and speed, speed limit reduction, potentially extending that 25 mile an hour speed zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance 2022-04 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 202204 as presented. I'll, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Absent.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boy?
Yes.
Member Strobin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sermon?
Yes.
Mayor Thornton?
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Brian?
Can I make one recommendation? When we're going over these ordinances and codes and stuff, I guess I would appreciate it if we could get some paper copies.
We can do that.
Thank you.
We have any additional business to come before us?
Just have a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Yes, once again. Appreciate everyone coming once again and have a good evening. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carried. Thanks, everyone.